Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Singh?
Here.
Kramer?
Rechner?
Here.
Henry?
Ister?
Here. I want to announce that in the past few days, we've had three executive sessions to discuss personnel issues within the police department. Can I have a second? Go up front. Also want to-
I have something first. Can I start, please? Jerry Campbell's here from Linda Culver's office.
Okay.
So I told her she'd be go first.
Alright. I can go next, or Ryan Walker?
You can walk. Yeah, you can walk.
Mr. Mayor, I'm honored tonight to be here. Unfortunately, Senator Goldner and Representative Culver are tied up in hospice. But we wanted to bring you citations to recognize your retirement.
Oh, thank you.
From the House and the Senate, so I'll just read this to you. The Senate and House of Representatives of Pennsylvania is always proud to acknowledge those individuals who through professional excellence bring great credit to themselves and to the Commonwealth. The Honorable David L. Persing, Mayor of the City of Sunbury, is being honored upon his December 2017 retirement after thirty-two years of dedicated service to the community. Employed with Woodmoode from 1969 until 2016, Mayor Persing began his service to the city of Sunbury in 1981 as a member of the Recreation Board and served on City Council from 1988 to 1989. Mayor of Sunbury from 1989 to 2005 and from 2008 until his retirement. He is a member of the Southern Redevelopment Authority and serves on the boards of Northumberland County Recreation and the Davidson Library. Active with the Amateur Softball Association of Pennsylvania, Mayor Persing was instrumental in organizing annual softball tournaments and served ASA in several capacities, including State Deputy Commissioner, Regional Vice President, District Court Commissioner, Executive Board Member, and National Player Representative. To his great credit, the North Fourth Street Recreational Area was renamed in his honor in 2005 and officially dedicated in June of 2017. Throughout his career, Mayor Persing demonstrated remarkable knowledge, ability, and integrity in carrying out his many responsibilities, thus earning the respect and gratitude of all those who received the benefit of his tireless devotion and duty. The Senate and House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania congratulates the Honorable David L. Persing upon his well-deserved retirement, heartily recognizes his exemplary record of service in keeping with the highest ideals and tradition of the Commonwealth. Offers best wishes for a happy and fulfilling future.
Thank you very much. Mr. Simpson? Dick. There you go. We're gonna give out two caring awards this evening. This young guy here, I think, I don't know why he wanted to retire. What we have here in front of us is a dedicated fire person in the city of Sunbury. And I say person because when I read some of the stuff you, I don't know what's left that you didn't do other than I don't see anything here about changing oil in the fire truck. But as far as Vice President Assistant Formans, we have House Committees, Chief Driver, we have Direction of, Director of the Relief Association, Chairman of the First Cascade System, Purchasing Committee, Original Member of the Memorial Committee, Memorial Committee Chairman, Memorial Committee Chaplain, Chairman of Memorial Committee, Direction of Memorial Committee Director. So you're going through all that kind of stuff. Second Assistant EMA, twenty-two years. Secretary of Sunbury Fire Street Fair, and a life member, Original Member of Good and Ten Fire Company, then turned up to be a life member of the Goodwood Lodge. So that's just a bunch of stuff that's in there, but again, it's dedicated people like you who make our community the way it is. And I want to thank you very much, and by doing that, we want to give you a caring award because truly, you do care about our community, and I'm glad to be your friend. And served the Sunbury Fire Department as a chaplain for twenty-eight years. Thank you very much. Don't you want to say, "Darwin?" I just want to mention a few things when we talk about caring and making impacts in the city of Sunbury. But Dar is in the seventies, there in the middle of seventies somewhere, but he's been around softball for fifty years. Right now, if you out there in Men's Slope Pitch Field out on Route Six, there's about him there. He's pretty much, he's not only the president of the association, he also is the groundskeeper. He's the chase the ball foul guy, foul ball guy. He's pretty much fix the scoreboard and strikes all the ambers in between that. But anyway, it's people like Dar, who, as I say, seventy-three this year, fifty years in more in ball. Has played on about every field that's in there. We can go back to the old Fins Hotel days and stuff like that, and Hurdy Insurance, Men's Recycling. But again, it's people like Dar that make a difference. It's why there is adult recreation in the city of Sunbury as far as slope pitch softball. Because the days when having teams and having ten teams and having ten representatives show up just doesn't happen. So it takes a guy that's really dedicated to the point that Darwin Clock is, and I'm here today to honor him because again, he truly cares about the city of Sunbury. And going forward, we thank you and want to give you a caring award.
Just a couple words, folks. I love the game softball. And Dave got elected mayor, he asked me to be on the record. And it was a way for me to get back and get both kids involved with all this and have them something else to do other than what they were doing. But we still love our people and spend a lot of time with it, but thanks a lot.
And I did forget to mention, Rick, because we couldn't figure out, I forgot, we couldn't figure out how many years you racked your run?
No.
You have any idea?
The first year you got on, doesn't matter.
Okay, so it's a lot of yours.
I just cared, I wanted to make sure that the kids had some other place to play ball and stuff like that.
Thank you. We have one more resolution, and I'm gonna stand up here and pass this. And I'm asking Councilmen, this is in my motion to pass this. This is sort of a surprise, I believe. But this is a resolution, whereas in 1995, Sunbury City Council determined that the future of Sunbury's recreational opportunities would be to locate them at the northern end of the city of Sunbury, which is now referred to as the David Persing Recreation Complex. Whereas in 2002, Councilman James R. Ister was appointed to Councilman in Charge of Parks and Recreation and Public Buildings and has followed the wishes of City Council by creating many recreational opportunities throughout the complex and particularly within the ice rink swimming pool facility. Whereas the ice rink swimming pool facility has grown from an outdoor rink to a multi-facility enclosed building and the home of the area's only hockey leagues for children as well as adults, as well as being the home facility for Susquehanna University and Bluesburg University Ice Hockey. The swimming pool has been upgraded to include two giant water slides and a water slide in the waiting pool area. Whereas the financial improvement to the city along with the positive impact to the quality of life in the city of Sunbury has made this a destination location in central Pennsylvania. Now therefore, I, David L. Persing, on behalf of the Council of the City of Sunbury, County of Northumberland, do hear what I resolve, that effective this date, the Sunbury Youth and Community Center of Central shall be named the James R. Ister Aquatic and Ice Skating Center.
Oh, wow. Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Persing?
Yes.
You can abstain.
Okay, because really, I know for people who have the agenda, there's a lot on it. There really isn't that much on there, so we're gonna be down through the agenda, get our business taken care of. Then to end the, what do we have listed on our audience comment, we're gonna start that off with a statement from the chief. So if you're here for the chief or for any of that situation, please just bear with us a second till we get down through our business first. Alright, so I need approval of Minister of the Fire Department, Treasurer, Engineer, Code Office, Public Works, and the Fighting Commission. Give us a second.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Persing?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Chester Street Project, Kim?
Yes, we finished up the last phase, we should be open next month, your Tuesday, Ronald section, and then we'll be opening the Chester Street up to local traffic for the rest of the year. Until next year, until this year, until we start, I got Phase Three.
Okay. Pay application?
I got a pay up here for CE, excuse me, for the engineer, eighty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars a year. Pay up, I think, seven, or something. Can I make a motion to pay that?
Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Any redevelopment?
Any re- ready January tenth?
Redevelopment won't meet again until January tenth, so we'll pass through that. Is there any here?
Is that the retreat?
Yes.
Is there any, anybody here from SRI? Okay. You ready?
Hi, I am. We still have our New Year's Eve-
Yes, go ahead, no, no, you go ahead.
We have our New Year's Eve celebration that's going off for our New Year's Eve, it's on Sunday night. We have old school, the band's playing, the ball's gonna go, the lights gonna go off, fireworks are gonna go. And hopefully, everybody can go and come and enjoy that. And everybody else can have a very nice, happy holiday, and that's what we have going on for right now.
Thanks.
You have good weather order?
I don't know, I haven't looked that far in advance, quite honestly, I go day by day.
Uh, budget? I forgot, we got code revisions first, secondly, you go ahead.
Alright, we had a first reading at the November thirteenth, council meeting, a few code revisions. Just to remind you, this set of code revisions deals with housekeeping regarding our rental permit application process. The goal being to align our code with not only the current practice, but also with other municipalities in our area. It is quite lengthy, so I'm going to go over the high points of this. Just to note, there haven't been any corrections or objections to any points within these code revisions between the last meeting for November thirteenth and today's second reading. Chapter 107, the proposed revision is to repeal that section because it's redundant with other sections we'll be discussing. So chapter 107 will be reserved for future use. Chapter 130, the proposed revisions, first under section two, we revise the definitions to make them city-specific, as well as to add definitions for prohibited furniture, removal of abandoned or prohibited furniture, egress, escape, and rescue, openings, and landscaping. All of these are in addition to the use of the International Property Maintenance Code as a resource for the Code Office. Section 134 deals with violations and penalties, and that is that any person who shall violate any provision of this chapter shall upon conviction thereof be subject to a fine of not less than a hundred dollars nor more than one thousand dollars, together with the costs of prosecution or imprisonment for a term of not exceed thirty days or vote at the discretion of the court. To say that a violation continues after due notice has been served in accordance with the terms and provisions hereof shall be deemed a separate offense. All violations, both interior and exterior of any property in our structure, shall show proof of assigned contract with a licensed contractor. We expanded this to include also any plan of action that may be subject to the Code Office as a sign of cooperation. Again, the violations would be a fine of one hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, together with the cost of prosecution. Chapter 134, this deals with the permit requirements. We expanded the language to include further definitions of who a person is under this definition. No person shall operate or rent to another for occupancy in residential dwelling unit, rooming unit, bed and breakfast, one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, multi-family dwelling, boarding house, lodging house, tourist home, dormitory, hotel or motel, until a housing permit has been issued by the Code Administration Office. Again, we expanded person to include everything from an agent, executor, partner, to the whole litmus there. The property owner or manager shall list all individuals living in that rental unit on the housing permit application. This was an update to occupants, not just those on the lease. Every permit has to designate a manager if the landowner is outside a twenty-five mile radius of the city. And the permit must be displayed for use or be presented to the Code Office upon request. Section 134.2 deals with the specifics of the permit application process. Additional information has been outlined, just again to match practice as a housekeeping matter here, that all names, addresses, and identification documentation of all tenants and or occupants over eighteen years of age must be included with proper identification. Throughout some of the changes that you all know here, we updated throughout these code sections that the reference to the Code Office is really the Code Administration Office to stay consistent with other revisions we've already done. Chapter 134.4 is the issuance of the occupancy permit. There are conditions that are outlined here as far as allowing for a permit to be issued. The applicant infrastructure must comply with all provisions of the Code of the City of Sunbury. A zoning use permit has to be issued if necessary. The applicant, property owner, and or manager are in compliance with the provisions of this chapter. The appropriate rental housing permit fees have been paid by the owner or manager. And the applicant maintains fire insurance for the premises and is in good standing regarding all applicable property taxes, sewer fees, and Code Administration actus violations. The Code Administration Office shall not issue a new or renewed permit if the applicant has delinquent property taxes, sewer fees, or has any outstanding fines and costs arising from the enforcement of the applicable Code of the City of Sunbury. The owner shall certify and attest in writing that there are no such outstanding taxes, violations, and or fees and said information provided, extrude and correct subject to the penalties provided, unsworn falsification to authorities. Under maintenance of premises and inspection, this section has just been updated mainly for language purposes. And I would note that the inspections may be made to obtain and maintain compliance with the purposes and intent and requirements of this chapter based upon the following. One, a complaint perceived by the city or by any law, Code Administration Office, indicating that there was a violation of any ordinance of the city. There's an observance by any law enforcement officer or the Code Administration Officer of a violation of standards of the provisions of any ordinance adopted by the city or Pennsylvania law. A report or observation of a rental unit that is unoccupied and unsecured or a rental unit that is damaged by fire. A failure to register or comply in any manner with the provisions of this chapter. By resolution of the Board of Health that deals with the arrogant use of properties. The need to determine compliance with a notice or an order issued by the city or its Board of Health. An emergency absurd or reasonably believed to exist, a request for an inspection by the owner, or routine inspection as described in paragraph D below. The next section deals with the inspection process itself. I apologize, this is lengthy, but again, it's a housekeeping matter of trying to make sure what we're doing in practice matches in the code section. If the inspection disclosed its violations, the Code Officer shall issue a letter to the owner or manager within seven days of said inspection. And the letter will indicate the date of the inspection, any code violations, a statement of repairs to be completed, and requests a plan of action. When the Code Administration Officer has determined that a rental unit is in compliance with all of the city ordinance's codes and regulations, the Code Administration Officer can issue a certificate of compliance for the inspected rental unit. If upon completion of an inspection, a rental unit is found to be in violation of one or more provisions of the city code, then the Code Administration Officer shall take one of the following actions. Provide the owner and or manager with written notice of such violations and require that they be corrected within a timeframe specified by the Code Administration Office. The time period for correcting most violations shall be thirty days or less. However, if a violation cannot recently be expected to be corrected within that time period, an extended period shall be permitted at the discretion of the Code Administration Office. For serious violations that pose a serious risk to the health and safety of the tenants and or occupants of the premises or others that do not require the property to be immediately vacated, the Code Administration Officer may require that violations be corrected within a period as short as twenty-four hours. They also set a re-inspection date before such violations shall be corrected. If such violations have not been corrected within the stipulated period of time, the Code Administration Officer shall not issue the certificate of compliance and may take any action necessary to enforce compliance with applicable city code and state laws provided herein. The Code Administration Officer will also provide the owner with a written notice of the violations and make a determination that the rental unit is unfit for human habitation, in which case it shall be vacated. If there is a complaint filed about a rental unit or premises with the city, the owner and or manager shall be notified in writing. In the event that the complaint is of an emergency nature as determined by the city or Board of Health, it will require immediate compliance and remediation by the owner and or manager. In the absence of adequate compliance and remediation, any code violations may be evaded by the city and charged to the owner. If the complaint is not of an emergency nature, the owner and or manager shall be afforded a reasonable period of time to correct such violations. The time period for correcting those violations shall be thirty days or less. However, if a violation cannot recently be corrected within a thirty-day period, an extended period may be granted by the Code Administration Officer. In the absence of adequate compliance and remediation, any code violations may be evaded by the city and charged to the owner. No inspection shall be completed until all inspection fees are paid in full. And the owner and or manager shall allow any and all agents, employees, and contractors of the city to access the premises and to any owner-occupied rental unit and or rental units situated thereon, enable the city to make any examinations and investigations that it deems necessary and proper, and shall further all the city and all its agents, employees, representatives, and contractors to take any compliance action authorized by this article or by an order of the Board of Health. A temporary certificate of compliance may not be upgraded to a certificate of compliance if all associated fees have not been paid in full. Furthermore, a certificate of compliance shall be revoked if all associated fees have not been paid in full within ninety days from the original billing date. The city can make repairs to the property, as well as, we updated the language, the owner shall be responsible for the removal of any items such as rubbish, garbage, or recycling materials at the expense of the owner if found to be a health and safety violation. Bear with me, one more long paragraph here. Section 134.9 is important, it deals with illegal activities. An individual convicted of any felony drug offense upon conviction and expiration of any applicable appeal period shall not be eligible to be listed on an occupancy permit. Felony drug offense shall be an offense that is punishable by imprisonment for more than one year under any law of the United States or the state of foreign country that prohibits or restricts drugs relating to narcotic drugs and other controlled substances. And so it includes any prohibited act under Pennsylvania's Controlled Substance, Drug, Device, and Cosmetic Act, 35PS, Section 780, 101, it says, where the offense is graded as a felony under Section 780, 113 of their act. A convicted illegal substance distributor shall not be eligible to be listed on an annual permit and shall be considered in violation of the city ordinance. Seven years after an individual's conviction and the expiration of any applicable appeal period, that individual shall be eligible to be placed back on a rental permit provided that the individual has no additional convictions of any felony drug offense during that seven-year period. Failure of the property owner to remove said convicted individual from the occupancy permit shall result in non-renewal removal of the rental permit. And I'll just note that that section in particular, the main update to it, dealt with adding federal definitions of felony drug offense so that we're aligned with both state and federal law in our code. I think everything else is housekeeping, let me just add one more, Section 134.11, violations and penalties. Again, we do make a reference to a fine of not less than a hundred dollars nor more than a thousand dollars. The final chapter that is being updated is chapter 175 regarding rental property permits. Again, through this, it's very much housekeeping, updating the language to include the title of Code Administration Office or Officer, where I'm involved. And also, instead of noting individual fees, we now refer to the non-rentable fees that would be as published on the annual city fee schedule, which I believe we will be getting there. And that does it.
Persing? Rechner? Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Excuse me? Excuse me, we didn't have audience comment at the beginning.
No, we said we're gonna have one needs comment at the-
But is in regard to this vote.
In regards to this vote? Go ahead, go ahead.
I, and we begin bringing to the council the concern over, I believe it's 175.90, the fast-track guidelines where it has the nine-hundred-square-feet item for central business district department minimum square footage. That was part of an attempt over eight years ago to try and encourage larger, nicer apartments to be built in the upper floors of the town. That hasn't, it doesn't appear that's been successful. Only one individual who has successfully done that, and that has been the former mayor who the guideline was passed under. So I think that we should return that, just reduce some of those jumping through hoops things and return that to the standard UCC guidelines for square footages, rather than having that nine-hundred arbitrary number in there.
It used to be like twelve, we're thirteen, if I remember correctly, and we lowered it one time to make it down to nine. Now you want it to go down lower yet.
Yeah, just as-
I don't think the support was here from council, I thought it wasn't changed, the support on this council wasn't there to drop it any lower.
But just to clarify, that particular change is not part of any of the housekeeping items of tonight's second reading of these code revisions.
Okay? Yes?
The other comment I would have is just in regards to that fee. I noticed the thousand-dollar initial rental permit fee was pulled out of that and has been moved into a fee list, I guess, is that being passed tonight as well? Because my concerns, I'm gonna go ahead and refer to that right now while I have the floor. And that is in regards to, my recommendation that we move to a fee that's more appropriate to similar towns. It's exorbitant, if you look at other towns, I think one-hundred-and-fifty dollars is the highest, even in like Bluesburg. Every other town is much lower, and we're at a thousand dollars. I know that's to discourage rentals, but I believe that that could be a concern legally for the city. I want to make those remarks.
We have a motion to afford except probably on front of us, are there any other questions to that? Oh, okay. I would recommend, and we'll put your two recommendations for next month, for them to look at that if they want to change that again.
Thank you.
Budget, Beth?
I'd like to pass the budget on the second reading, we've managed to get a family just a two mil tax increase. I'd like to make that a motion.
Can we highlight a little bit what's in that?
Yeah, let me highlight a little bit, what's in that budget increases. We have the 18% increase in healthcare this year, which turns around to $149,000. Also in that budget this year is to hire a new police officer, at about $79,000 for a first year for him. So that budget increase with $2,000 included into high-cost income. So besides that, everybody else kept a line on everything in their departments. It's a pretty thin budget, I think it's a doable budget. The council all looked at it, and in the past 30 days, sat down and met a couple times, and we cut one down, one million out of the three that we passed 30 days ago, so... I still have the budget standing right now, so some of you guys can pass it if you're happy with it. And that's, like I said, that's including $2,000.
The county down three police officers in 2017?
This will give us 12 full-time chiefs now? 11, this gives us 11 now.
But you're down three.
No, I don't think we're down three from 16. I think that's pretty about the same number that we were for the last couple of years. We hired Matt, and we hired Chris his last two years. Yeah, Chris, and I think we hired two this past year. This is the third hire we've had.
Who's the other Jim besides Haggis?
Haggis, Chris, LeBott.
Is he one of the...
Goodbye, goodbye, sorry.
Pro group, the Virginia area?
Uh, West Virginia.
Is he on the street yet?
Yes, he is.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask you if you look at your records on SRI?
Wait, 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 we're talking about the budget right now. You have a comment on the budget? Okay. Any comments on the budget? All right, we have a first, we have a second?
Yep. Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Purcell?
Yes. Second, any of the tax ordinance that goes with that, Beth?
We have to formally pass that on the second reading to raise the taxes to more than... The real... So I made that a motion.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Purcell?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
If I saw the fee schedule resolution, that's part of it.
Yes. I can't go over it because it's like really...
Well, every council has a problem.
Every council member has it. It's quite lengthy.
I want to tell you just what the major things are in that.
Major changes.
Major changes are parking tickets, meter violation remain at $10, going up to $20 after 72 hours. All the rest of the tickets, except handicap and emergency parking, will be $25, going up to $50 after 72 hours. Another change that we had was the monthly parking permits will go up to $20 from $15.